Budget projections. So I'm gonna try really, really hard not to go blind on the line item to tell you just some quick facts. The penny now, one penny now brings in nine thousand one hundred and eight bucks is what it brings in. In front of you is the, you see the budget revenues and the property tax of one million four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Four sixty-three, three hundred and seventy-three dollars is what the property tax is at now. This is not the recommendation that what M. Task has told us to do in the past, which is a nickel a year. So if the board wants to do that, you could simply add forty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars to the revenue. Without adding, without adding that, you're still to the good and the budget is balanced. But for unforeseen reasons, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but this is projections only. We could land in behind the eight ball in general fund if we're not very, very careful. So I think Joel would like to see us take a look at that number to add to that if that's what we want to do. That's something that you can just kind of be thinking about as we start going down the budget. So going down there, sorry, I graduated the glass. Yeah, so looking at our budget, you can see going down to the revenue sides that our beer sales, we budgeted a hundred and eighty thousand. We actually collected about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's in under the revenues column there. Wines and spirits actually collected about eighty-five thousand dollars, which will take care of, which will take care of our pavement note. Another thing that this general funding, when we get to the street department, you'll be able to, you'll see is, and I'll go ahead and bring it up right now, that I have zero dollars in paving this year for the streets of Livingston. We have reached out to the Rogers Group, one point four million is what it would take to complete the street pavement project that we have. So you can see where we're at, bringing in a nickel will only generate forty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars. But that's something that we could certainly open to talk about, but currently, right now, I do not have that in the budget.
Mayor, it would be possible just to take that into increments, like the one point four million. If we said, all right, whatever we could afford to make a payment on out of the forty-five or let's say another eighty or whatever, we come up with another thirty-five, we could go back and try to repeat what we did last year and do a smaller portion of that one point four, could we not?
Oh, we could, absolutely, we could, absolutely. Yeah, that's something to consider. We've took some pretty big bites. The last two years, we've done two million dollar projects and we are seventy-five percent complete. That last twenty-five percent is gonna be a doozy, it looks like, just to try to come up with a guess. We could do that together. So looking at the business taxes revenue, we've bounced back nicely, as you can see, from twenty-nine eighty to twenty, we've collected seven hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand more than we have. We've collected that, given, and this comes back from one of our hardware, is what this bounce back of the business taxes, okay? Cable TV franchise has taken a hit due to more live streaming that is going on. So some of the live streaming has interfered with some of our collections in the cable TV franchise.
I just have a general question.
Yes, sir.
On the revenue side, and this might be for Joel, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I guess I don't really understand, let's see, for example, your local sales tax. Just look at that line item. You're projected one million, one fifty-four, six, seven, nine, right? The original budget was nine eighty. Why then do we not go over to the amended budget and change that to reflect the projected amount? I mean, because you're clearly, you're running over your budget. So why does that not show up as an amended budget item?
We have not done the amended yet, but the amended budget is gonna be scheduled for June twenty-eighth, I think.
Okay.
So it's not yet been prepared.
But it will eventually go over into that column.
Yeah, and by then, we're gonna have a lot better projected figures on it.
Okay, all right, because it looks like right now you're projecting a surplus to be about four hundred thousand dollars over budget. And you think a lot of that's the hardware and then that increase in the property tax, we get more for two.
That's right. That's exactly right. If the board decides to do that. So again, remember, this is a projection, okay, of what we think the next fiscal year will look like.
No, I mean, we're bringing in more this year because of the rear price.
Oh, yeah, we're bringing in, we're bringing in more a couple of reasons, I think, yeah. So I think the pandemic has helped us. I think that people stayed at home more and less trapped and shopped more locally. I think that, I think that's been, I mean, as one of the stores will say, every day was Christmas to them. Especially inside of their zone, okay?
Bear in mind also that these are unaudited projected figures.
Okay.
So there could be some misclassifications in there. That's why we want to be a little bit like the service side.
Also, the pay scale is in effect, as we've done, all the pay scale has been put in the general fund, water, gas, sewer, water plants, sewer plant, airport. So that's in here as well. On page two.
Can we ask a question as we go through to the next page?
Yep, sure.
All right, down under fines and forfeitures, we cut it to thirty-five, it looks like we're projecting sixty-three. Remind me what's in that, that bucket, fines and forfeitures?
Well, that will be the police department, you know, your citations issued, anything that has been seized.
Okay, that's all separate. All right, and then we had a forty-five thousand dollar sale of assets. I know that wasn't the auction, but what was that? Remind me what that was. It's under the revenue.
Right.
Do you not remember that?
Thirty thousand.
It's one point forty-five, so.
Basically, the projected.
Okay, yeah, the projected. Well, so that's been any auction that we have had, that we projected to have, and of course, we get that.
Oh, okay, so that was just projected on the auction that we felt like we were gonna have.
That's right.
That's gonna exceed that.
That's right.
Okay, gotcha.
That's exactly right. Anything else on page one?
I don't think so, please.
All right. So we go to pages two, the fund part, that's the expenditures. So like I said, the pay scale is in effect. We have just a little increase there with the Highlands and the Chamber, three thousand with the Chamber, five thousand with the Highlands. Also, under construction, under expenditures, if you can see as you go on down, down the page, that I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there now. If you go all the way down and if you look at your right column, all the way down, three quarters the way down, you'll see a spot that says a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is the building construction. And what that, what that is there for, the reason I put that number in there, as you remember, I reported that we did have some findings with Toshia, Hoshia. That's what I do too, Ken, to make sure. Usually, I have them rooted to go by.
Where is that again?
Building construction, if you go down the right side under twenty-one, twenty-two, proposed, and then on the left side, it says building construction. It's under expenditure, under paid, on page two.
I don't think there's a.
I don't think there's a paragraph at the bottom.
You're looking at it's like.
I don't want to give that back.
Yeah, it says insurance is on it. Which was gonna be that one question.
Yeah, so let me go back to my. I've overlooked that. That building construction, let me not try to put it in the police department, I'm sorry. Give me just a second. We worked on these things pretty solid. So there, under, under building construction, should be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My apologies. Okay, and what that, what that is, is it is for some renovation to the public safety building. That will be sleep quarters for firemen, and in there as well is some office space for the police department. So that's, and I had Christian, her in-house builder, to give me that price and said that should be well in the budget. So any questions on page two?
Oh, yes.
All right.
We budgeted fifteen, I'm sorry, five grand to the Highlands Initiative and we're gonna spend fifteen. I don't remember us changing that. Do you? Up in the dues and donations, it says we budgeted five for Highlands and we're giving them fifteen?
No, we're giving them ten.
Well, it says projected fifteen, one eighty-five. Giving them ten would be next year. I'm talking about this year.
Yeah, we only gave them five this year, so I thought.
So that's, that's wrong, because it says projected fifteen thousand.
It could be discounted.
Yeah, all right, no problem. And then down here under employee insurance, I'm assuming that's healthcare insurance, right? Okay, so we went from a budget of a hundred grand to a hundred, we're projecting a hundred and fifty. So are we seeing that kind of increase, fifty grand in one year?
Well, we're projected high, and we, you know, we pray that it comes in a lot lower, but that's, you know, I, that, you know.
But projected, projected should be what we're running here today, right?
Projected is what we're looking at for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. That's, that's what I've got right here. That's what proposed is on that, on that line all the way to the right.
Yeah.
So.
I realize that, but I thought projected in the two thousand twenty, twenty-seven budget, this second column, is what we're tracking to spend this year. That's what we're projecting to spend this year. So it says we're projecting we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty, not a hundred, is what we budgeted. You see what I'm saying, Mayor?
Mm-hmm, I do.
So I'm just curious, does that kind of influence what we're seeing this year?
Yes.
So maybe this will have a lot more than we thought it was going to when we funded it.
Is that health, is that health insurance?
That's health insurance.
Health insurance.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a fifty percent increase?
Right. Yeah, and, and, and so let's, let's have a conversation about that. So obviously, you know, nobody wants to violate any hip, okay? So your, your, your insurance, the way it's based, everybody knows this, is we're in a group. So we're in this group together. So if insurance or if employees' claims are higher, then that's what bases your increase on your health insurance. If you have a healthy group, then your, your increase is not as much. But if you had someone that has some major, or has got major health conditions over the last twelve months, that either has been hired in or is a current employee, but has become diabetic, has cancer, or a case may be. And so they take the risk out at first and then they add it to your premium at the end. So we think that a fifty percent increase is a high increase, without a doubt, but I'd rather be higher than lower.
Who's the, who's the insurance?
Blue Cross Blue Shield, Tennessee.
And is that something in with the municipal league?
No, it is not. That's the city of Livingston. And, and we are looking at, and we looked at, Tom Stevens is our administrator. We looked at Tennessee Healthcare, or excuse me, United Healthcare, and we looked at Etna. And their numbers came back higher than we said with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we're taking a look at Tennessee Health Works, which is a pooling deal that sees possibly could get in, kind of like a risk management, that we could bring our premium down. But that's not in stone yet. In fact, I don't, we're getting some paperwork too there.
I've just occurred to me, look at that number, not the projected for next year, but what we're gonna spend this year to make sure that that fifty percent increase is accurate. Because that looks awfully high than what you pointed out.
Oh, we can certainly.
I was just thinking a little.
Yeah, sure.
And I mean, we're seeing increases in our employee health insurance as well, but not fifty percent.
And, and, and Kelly, I'll tell you another thing. We didn't have an increase here for three years. Zero increase to earn police and then boom. So let's keep that in mind too.
Sure.
Any other questions on page two? Okay, I just also, let me hand out, I think in your packet, you have a schedule of utilities and indebtedness. So that has been asked, how much debt that there is in general, including water and gas and all that. So you should have that in your packets. It should look just like this. Did you all get that, Phyllis? Did you? They did? They did?
I did. The water and gas in the back here?
Yeah, the water and gas.
No, 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 I'm talking about the debt, Kelly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you should have a page in here that shows you what debt and when it's coming off the books.
Right, right, right.
Just something you should have, that is not really huge significant, but it's something that I wanted you all to have. We'll get you to that. Okay. All right. Page three.
Page three?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Uh, no real changes there. Something, something that we looked at doing and just couldn't afford, and I had a conversation with Enterprise Fleet, kind of like we did with our Public Works. It was gonna cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars to lease out, how many was it, nineteen, nineteen vehicles, there was, excuse me?
Patrol cars.
Yeah, it was SUVs, Dodges. And I think supervisors had Chevy cars or something like that, but there was only two of them. So it was two hundred thousand dollars, and it was a five-year deal. And obviously, if you see the revenue and the expenditures, along with the payment, I just had to cut it. So when I started this, and what I do, and I've got all the supervisors here, we start with a wish list. And each department head turns in a wish list of things that they would like to see in the budget. And as I tell them, we can turn it in. It could get hacked if we can't afford it. So in, in the police department.
So there were a wish list of nineteen vehicles?
Yes.
No, that was looking at, we went for the lease.
I know, but it included nineteen.
Yeah, but, and, and, yeah, Captain Smith and Greg Etheridge are here tonight, and they will tell you that they've got, or some problems, maintenance problems with their patrol cars. So what I did was put more money in the budget for maintenance.
Sure.
Yes.
I was just curious if they projected needing eighteen, nineteen vehicles?
Well.
That's, that's wrong.
That's what we looked at, wasn't it?
That's right.
Yeah.
So.
Now, that just replaced, like, if we were to replace the existing, it would have taken nineteen to do, is right? Not that we need nineteen, you know, exactly.
That's right. That's exactly right.
This is not a lease purchase, I think.
Right, so we didn't do it. No, this will just be leased and then you return it over in five years. Like, the Public Works is three years, police department could have been five, but I didn't have the extra two hundred thousand. Okay, you'll, if you go down to the fire department, you can see that where we have added four firemen, the salary hourly wages has went up to about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So also, you can see there, under equipment, has went up to about fifty-five thousand. And keep in mind, that is for traffic light equipment as well as some other things. So, so the traffic lights and things that is in there. According to Chief Dow, sleeping quarters for personnel, for four sets of turnout gear, eight papers, replace parkway traffic lights, replace three conflict monitors, and replace two controllers. So that number equals to what I've got in there.
So we had one year full-time during this year, correct?
Yeah, that is.
This is the year where.
Did we have one or two?
Correct, two.
Add two, yeah.
And this is adding two more or four more?
This is adding two more. This is adding two more.
And that's, yeah, so isn't there a possibility we might get some grant funds?
That's right. Chief Allen and I was talking about that. Of course, you have to apply for the grant, and then you have to be awarded the grant. And then it is, is kind of like the COGS fast program that we did years and years ago, that you, you pay, they pay eighty percent the first year, maybe fifty percent the second year, maybe twenty the third, Rocky, is that right?
Seventy-five the first, seventy-five the second, and fifty the third, and zero the fourth year.
Yeah.
So if we get.
Yeah, so we're planning on doing, applying.
Absolutely.
And so with the two that we added in this fiscal year, and the two more we're gonna add next year, proposed, that easily ensures that we have a minimum of two people on call out there twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, correct?
Unless somebody takes vacation or sick, he's helped, but two will break during the day unless somebody takes off.
I think the goal, I think the goal with M. Task was ten, to have ten full-time firemen.
So that you can ensure you have at least two on duty all the time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It takes ten to get to the two, is that the?
It, the goal is to be, Rocky, if we had ten.
The goal was four on per shift.
That's ten additional.
Yeah.
To what we have.
Yeah, I mean, ten additional personnel. We're gonna put four on per shift, and then you would do a minimum staffing of three. So only one per shift could take off. That would leave you with a minimum of three. Normally, it would be four unless somebody takes off.
Okay, thank you.
So this puts us up four towards the ten.
That's right.
Right?
We have one, this gets us.
Yeah.
This gets two per year.
We added two this year in the first.
That's right.
We're adding, we're proposing to add two more.
That's right.
So that's four more of the recommended ten that they're suggesting, right?
That's right.
Yeah, we would like A. F. or B.
That's right.
But that's not counting you?
No.
Okay.
No.
So it, it, it's ten additional, other than what we had, it was ten new firemen, ten new positions.
But there's rationality kind of adding ten.
Yes.
The ten is to ensure, their recommendation is, you need to add ten more in order to ensure that we don't have similar situations we had last year with a certain call without adequate staff.
That's what M. Task recommended.
That's why I remembered.
That's right.
So we're gonna continue to add two this year?
Well, we're gonna do what we can pull.
Yeah.
So in parts of the number there, we've had a lot of requests over the years for the tennis courts to be resurfaced, along, where they, it's gonna be a, actually a, I guess, two parts of this. Their pickleball that has been brought up and being played all over the country, will be in our neighboring counties. Sixty thousand dollars, we'll be repairing our existing courts, where they can play tennis in pickleball.
So you're gonna pursue getting some quotes in that?
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll bring it back to the board. It's just, it's just projections. And anything that is, is proved here will come back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, page, page four.
I have a question on.
Yes, sir.
On page three at the top, safety, public safety police. It looks like we're gonna spend around six hundred and fifty-six thousand, if those numbers come in as, as we're projecting.
Right.
Our budget was roughly seven hundred thousand, so it looks like we're saving a little money there. We're under budget in our salary, what it looks like, correct? All right, so I'll keep that in mind for a question I have later in meetings. We're under budget on top. This year, we're tracking under budget.
Well, this, we're at six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. The original budget was six hundred and ninety-nine. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You're saying that six fifty-six is where we are, that's what we're projecting in the year? I guess.
That's, that, that's what's confusing, I think this needs to be clarified.
Is that, is that the names figure, or is that for projecting to be the end?
Phyllis, that's the names figure.
No, that's.
That's what you projected.
So the names picture, picture is what you know.
It is.
How? But what we did, we lost some experience from this, I think.
So then we're probably, you might have.
This says we're gonna spend less than a budget, but that's what projected. Projected is saying, we, we know what we found our figures for three months, and we're gonna average that, we're gonna put in here for those additional two months, and that's what you projected for this year.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. You're exactly right.
All right.
So I'm, I'm looking.
I just wanna reference that.
That's right. I, I keep looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed, okay? Because that's what I've been working on with the.
Sure, 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 sure.
Now, reducing the officer's pay, you got some money coming in from the county. That always offsets the pay on that line item where the SRO goes. So that, that reduces, so he may have posted six ninety-nine and did not count the refund or from the county assistance.
But to us, it looks like we're gonna be under budget on the salary.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Because we projected a little bit higher.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when we come in there. That's right. That's exactly right. All right, is there any other questions on page four?
Page three.
Page three. I've got page four to my left, and I'm looking at page three. I have it myself.
It's a lot, it's a lot of questions.
All right.
Do you get reimbursement from the hospital for the?
Yes. And, and, and the, uh, and the SROs for scruples, that's what Joel was talking about. So on page four now. Uh, looking there at the, uh, the lights, um, we have proposed a hundred and forty thousand dollars for streetlights, and we think, uh, we budgeted one seventy-five, so we think because of the LED lighting that we have done, it's looking like we're gonna be right at one forty, that's based on, remember, Mr. Jimmy Gregory coming in.
About thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven thousand lights, we're gonna have.
That's right, uh, and again, uh, this is streets and you can see there, there's no money budgeted for, uh, the payment.
Why does that payment figure show up in, in here, do you have to account, you have to account for here, but then there's a, is there a credit for it over in the bottom side, Joel? Your full eight fifty-eight showing up here is an expense for projected this year, I don't think that's really accurate, is it?
Oh, it's actually, you spent nine hundred fifty-eight.
Right, but there's also, but then there's an offset to that on revenue side, right, from the.
Yeah, well, down below here, almost got to it.
Oh, okay.
There's a million dollars down there.
Gotcha.
And we moved a hundred thousand to the street department because we have the street aid funds, uh, there's a calculation on street fund, street aid fund has carried so much expense over the years, and it had not picked up any of this, uh, payments, so if we moved a hundred thousand dollars, then we're gonna move the revenue a hundred thousand as an offset.
Yeah.
It's not physically gonna move to the checking account, it's a paper transfer.
Yeah, they want, hey.
So talking to, uh, Mr. Pete, uh, we came to an agreement, uh, he is, uh, so we're a chipper truck, a leaf truck, uh, and a flat brown, uh, truck is what we have, uh, said that he can do, he liked to have, uh, and I had this in there as well, a long arm boom tractor, uh, is what Mr. Pete would like to have for the street department, but I had to cut that out, cause it was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, mine, yes, let's talk about that, well, he said he thought we had one.
We knew, but it's over twenty-something year old, we've done a lot of patching on it.
So, uh, and we're looking, I, I can't find a lease deal on this long arm boom, and, and of course he cuts the railways with that and, uh, keeps them clean, so we're gonna continue to work with what we got.
I noticed today that P-Dog was cutting their ride along down West Broad, did you notice that way?
Yes, I seen it.
If they're good one.
Okay, to go on, is there any questions on page four?
Can we use that, the thirty-six thousand savings on the streetlights to maybe go towards payment year?
I mean, we, we can, uh, you know, that, that's a projection, you know, uh, if, if we get toward the end of the fiscal year of twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, and, and if the funds are available, uh, then we can certainly strike up a payment deal, uh, I got, I went ahead, um, and got some numbers from the bond fund just to see what a, a payment will be, and, and, and actually this works in water and, uh, general fund. But your payment, the seven-year capital outlay, you know, one point three million, which I know you said you probably just do that increments, but if you did that, looks like your payment's two hundred thousand dollars a year.
So if you had that, it might be happening.
Right, that's right.
Well, I guess going over to that point, that you, you look at the revenue side, in our original budget this year, we had three point five five million, and it looks like we're gonna project to receive four point two six. I mean, according to my look, I don't know, it looks like that's over six hundred thousand dollar surplus. Down revenue from what we budgeted, and so what our dog, what you've done then is just taken that, you, you're basically taking the areas that you feel like that those increases are gonna be sustained in next year.
Right.
You're reflecting in the, in the projected and increasing in areas like the maintenance on the, police building, et cetera, et cetera. So you're absorbing those anticipated increases, sustaining increases to next year.
Right.
You're beating that up.
Right.
But payment's not in here.
Take out.
That's right.
Oh, note that, um, the intergovernmental state grants is under budget, uh, is over budgeted by two hundred and ten thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred and ten thousand.
Where is that again?
Uh, second.
They got maybe a five fifteen, eighteen, thirteen?
So six hundred some thousand, four hundred and fifteen thousand is in that category, and when the grant money comes in, it's also expensed out, so there's probably some expenditures that.
That's our number, right?
That were, exactly.
Okay, so really, isn't that just more than two hundred thousand?
Possible.
Uh, surplus. Okay, all right, that makes sense.
And then while we're still talking about general fund, I think it's just a good idea to revisit the building construction that was left off, a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, now, one possible fix on that, is I'm gonna ask the mayor a question. When you came up with the police hourly wages, did you consider the, um, the money, the SRO and the refunding money? So that actually is gonna come down.
We did not, right, Phil, we did not.
So that, that's gonna bring down that line item, you know, sixty thousand dollars or more.
In, in which line item?
On the police hour.
Another, is it gonna come down off of actual?
His projected proposal for twenty-one, twenty-two is actually overstated because he didn't consider the SRO money.
So it's gonna be about sixty thousand wider gap to what I'm showing.
No, the expense is gonna come down.
The expense that.
So it's gonna ne- it's gonna narrow the gap, and then.
So he's gonna have some more, that's what I'm thinking of. Right, yeah, yeah, the expense comes down, the expense comes down.
And that helps out the funding of the public safety building.
True, but the, the actual wages spent.
Cash-wise, it's the same number, but, but he's not reflecting the reimbursement side.
That will change.
The net cost.
Yeah, thank you, Joel.
So that's sixty thousand on a hundred fifty.
Well, this is one of the fixes from overlooking the hundred fifty thousand on the public safety building.
So if you take the combined revenue, the SRO, hospital, and what the general fund provides to police, then our projected expense here, that gap goes from, we're under budget, thirty thousand to ninety thousand, right?
No, 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 so his, the actual expense line item on should not be seven twenty-five. If you work in the reimbursements for SRO and from the hospital, that actual could probably come down by seventy-five thousand perhaps.
I'm looking at this year, Joel, I'm looking at the six fifty-six projected for this year, that expense.
Right.
Right?
No, no, I'm talking about the.
Proposed.
Proposed twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, I see the seven twenty-five.
Yeah, so that number I believe is overstated.
Right.
By the SRO and the hospital.
Okay, so.
What I did was I simply added the salaries up.
Right.
Uh, along with the pay scale and proposed seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
That makes sense.
And, and what Joel's saying is, you, you could probably take out that reimbursement that we get from the hospital and, uh, can't. But I, I didn't do that, I just, I just left that.
But that could say it was about, what, sixty?
That'd be a good safe number. I think it's about fifty-five thousand from the hospital, potentially more than, um, maybe thirty-five from the SRO. I would figure on sixty is a good solid number.
So then at the, uh, sewer plant, uh, got, uh, again, um, uh, Mr. Manford supervising there, three screw pump deflection plates, regular steel, uh, for forty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, or stainless steel, at fifty thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, I went with the higher one, uh, that, uh, we did get, Danny's here to discuss that, I need to, uh, page everyone.
Four something? Four?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Danny, you'll talk about that.
Well, not sewer plant, we have, uh, screw pumps, three screw pumps that lift water from a lower elevation to a higher elevation. These screw pumps has garbets or splash glands that runs down the side of each one of them, and the reason they have these garbets is to keep as the hour is houring the water forty foot up straight up, to keep the water from back pulling back to the bottom. And them garment plants are splash glands, it's been on there since about nineteen ninety-three. So what I done, I called a local distributor here in town, and I had them to price them, and they priced, uh, stainless steel versus steel, but here's what you get into. If you get steel, they'll have to be, uh, primered and powder coated, because steel underneath water or running well water won't last long. So they come up and, uh, price stainless steel. Stainless steel can be a long time fix, which stainless can handle water at a very good, uh, you know, degree versus state. And that's the price we come up with, I believe, uh, the labor, they said not to exceed, I believe the labor may be a little cheaper than what is, uh, that's probably the worst case scenario. I believe sixty-six hundred dollars per garment or per, uh, body, um, and right now, we have three of them, we have one that is, uh, very, very rusty. The, uh, anchors has broke on it, it's kinda come apart, the other two is not much better shape. So we could, uh, possibly come in with one, but possibly come in with three, or if it's just too much with the blade tilt, you know, we had to have them, but one of them is coming very near in the future.
And I, I jumped again there, that's actually on page eleven, I'm sorry. The sewer plant, I jumped again there, but anyway, thank you for that report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're like you.
Okay, so is there anything to finish on the board?
No, 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 that's just solid waste, that's right. All right, Joel. On page five is our, uh, street aid, uh, I don't have anything to report there other than the pay scales effect, that's, uh, Mr. Pete, your street supervisor, we paid that out street aid, okay?
Between now and the next budget, can you give me a copy of the?
Sellers?
Yeah, you know, by employee, kinda like a show of the pay scale, I'm just curious how it's moving.
Yep, yep, sure can. Uh, so if there's no questions on the street aid, we will go to, uh, page number six in the home rehab grant. We applied, we have anything there, uh.
That's what happened, show that we had that.
That's right, that's right. Uh, page number seven is drug fund, um, fines and forfeits, drug fines and fees, you can see what the proposed budget is there, seven thousand. Other rev- revenues, sales of assets, you can see that, uh, the chief's gonna be selling some assets that he has, uh, up there, uh, which he's predicting, uh, estimating about a hundred thousand dollars worth, to take the total revenues to a hundred and seven.
It says that we're gonna track to sell roughly fourteen thousand this year, we projected it to sell a hundred.
That's right.
Why aren't we paying five thousand short this year, why don't we sell it this year?
Some things we were trying to finish up and get ready, it's actually stuff that you all have already approved. There's a couple of things that I had worked out with the state to ensure that it was thumbs up to, to liquidate, so as we got closer in with this year, I thought, well, let's just, we haven't had a lot of expenditures this year, so I thought, well, that'll work me out through next year.
And since that shortfall there really doesn't affect any of our budgets, it doesn't matter.
Zero, it's the drug funds.
Yeah, I could actually take it and run it through.
That's right, thank you, thank you, chief.
What is that fifty thousand, um, you made me say this, I'm sorry, I missed it, fifty thousand other maintenance sources?
That is, uh, projected where, uh, like Chief said, there was not a whole lot of expense in there. Uh, general fund had borne most of that expense, so we're shifting expense from general to, uh, drug, an amount of fifty thousand about that. And then we're moving to funds, again, it's just a paper transfer.
Yeah, but you can do that, you can shift general to drug, I didn't, I thought that was, had to do nothing on it, I thought you couldn't use drugs for.
Well.
Shifting in and out of drug.
It's projected.
Okay.
If we find that those expenses are reasonable and allowable, then we'll.
Okay, all right. Are you planning to resume police camp?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you didn't have it this year, right?
Yes, sir.
So that projected twenty thousand that were so shown around the city, are we really gonna spend that? So then that should be a thousand twenty thousand, we're not gonna spend, cause it's still showing up as a projected expense this year.
Right.
Yes, police camp.
We, because the CDC had changed their guidelines there and said you'd have to wear masks at the camp, I said no, so we, we are not.
So there's twenty thousand we're not gonna give.
When are you going to have?
Um, Rob Kuma will rule that, that week.
Yeah.
Is that portion?
Good question, solution.
Chris, there's twenty-one thousand. Oh, that's true.
Right, right, there. So page number eight, we don't do anything with it, that's a financial, financial, without enough funding, we had a manufacturer that wanted to cut it, uh, we could use that money. On page nine, Joel, I'll turn and go over to the general debt service, please.
Okay, um, it's still projected that the state sales tax is quite a bit higher than the twenty, uh, nineteen twenty actual numbers. Uh, it's quite a bit over original budget, and I encouraged him to, uh, the mayor to propose a little bit higher figure than what he had for sales tax. Uh, the four hundred thousand projected for twenty-one, twenty-two is in between the actual of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty, nineteen twenty and this year, twenty twenty-one. So we expect that to be a good safe estimate.
The four hundred?
The four hundred thousand revenue. As far as possible, it could come in over that number, but it's just our nature is to budget a little bit low on revenue, a little bit high on expense. Uh, the numbers that are for the debt service, or, first of all, note all the payment notes and such, those are carved in stone, that are just rounded off a little bit high just to be safe. Uh, so you're projecting a quarter thousand dollar, uh, getting into the fund balance at the bottom, where it says net change of fund balance. The book of fund balance is fairly solid, it's stayed above three hundred thousand the last few years. If necessary, there are funds that we can budget, or we can move from general, that would actually be hard cash, that we move to the checking account. We don't have to address that until next year, then we see what happens. Ideally, that sales tax is gonna come in a higher number, which could offset that shortage.
That's healthy, that's where you wanna be.
Yeah, if there's any new debts, now, the mayor talked about the, uh, the funds in general fund of eighty-five thousand for, I remember checking which line item it was, um, they would cover the debt, the debt's actually in the general fund, and general fund is, is, the debt is paid from the general debt service fund. Um, but yes, it, it does cover that eighty-five thousand.
But it's also showing as an expense in the general fund?
No, no.
Or it shouldn't be?
No, it's not.
Okay.
I think we're on the same page, it just didn't. I think we're on the same page. It just didn't, um.
It did get put in RAS line.
It is. Now, it's just the way, the wording that it came out. I think you had asked a question about eighty-some thousand. Eighty-seven is covered through this line item. Technically, that, uh, the debt is covered from the debt service fund. And if general fund had to, then it could shift the money over. But debt service is covered by its own revenue.
Since debt always comes up to the question and the position our city's in as it relates to revenues, asset versus debt. You're, you're willing to, again, report to this committee that our financial condition is strong.
It's good.
We have, we have positive fund balances that we can use, utilize to shift reserves that we need to, right?
I always like to remind you forward every time, um, so you know by now that the fund balance is not equal cash. If you had a new debt, you need to, uh, purchase a bag though, or just, that's just an example, just to spot it out. Uh, you would have to adjust that, um, that negative forty thousand might be sixty thousand or seventy thousand.
I think it's important to hear that from you as our certified financial planner, merely because, you know, from time to time, we get feedback from constituents, taxpayers, that our town is up to its neck in debt and that we're not in good financial condition. And I think it's important to remind our people that's simply not factual.
In years prior, before the sales or before the property tax was addressed like it should have been, that was a problem.
Yep.
And your recommendation, is, is your recommendation basically the mayor in tax recommendation in that we consider a minimum of a nickel increase annually?
I like that.
That's on the luxury cost.
It, it keeps you from having to trust, you know, unless something just bad happens. Keeps you from having to submit a request for twenty-one cents or fourteen cents. That's a tough sell.
Sure. All right, thank you so much.
All right, going on to, uh, page ten, uh, this is the water and sewer fund. Uh, you can see the, uh, water revenues, uh, water sales, three million nine hundred proposed. Uh, I, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Davenport, which is with us. Uh, you all have the letter. Uh, so I'm going to let Mr. Davenport talk about the letter. Greg, are you still there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, carry on.
Okay, good. Uh, well, good evening, mayor. Now, first, I pretty think I'll say to, uh, communicate with you about the budget. Uh, if you'll recall, only three or months ago, uh, I attended a zone meeting where we talked about the city's water system leakage. And I think we all understood the gradient situation and the fact that that's probably the number one issue based in the water system right now is to reduce the leakage. Um, the system's leaking around the median gallon a day, uh, approaching forty-five to fifty percent. So about half the water you're pumping is, is leaking out into the ground. The good thing is that there's been a couple fairly large leaks that were found since then, uh, in our city crews. Uh, the bad news is, it appears there's a lot of very small leaks up there, uh, that are not really telling on themselves. So the basic part of the discussion related to the budget is, uh, a two-part project. Number one is the, uh, TDBD funded project. It's funded by six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And it can use to develop water drinking homes and approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars in city funds. And it exists of the replacement of approximately seven thousand near feet, uh, of fixed water line. Uh, for two reasons. One is to replace old leak lines and the other is to, uh, increase, uh, the availability of fire flow in the system, which helps with, uh, home insurance and other, um, factors like that. So you've got to come up with about a hundred grand to, uh, fit in on that part. That project is designed and it is advertised a bid and it's at the two P M, Tuesday about six. We can all come to Livingston and open the bid and I'll be at the council meeting, uh, Tuesday about six. The second project is more or less a, I guess, a metering project. Um, it, it consists two hundred meters. Since I spoke to you last, we have dissected the system as a several hundred. And we have figured locations to install what we call zone meters. So, you know, it's like you have a significant component of your water system that turns out in one direction. You could meter the water flowing through that line and it would tell you if you were, a泵water was flowing through that line to what you were selling. Uh, the third component is the replacement of the majority of your residential water meters in what I would call the main part of the city's water system. That would exclude areas outside of the system such as Delman and Monroe. So the, the meter project, the residential customers, consists of two parts. Number one is as the meter ages, it does not run faster, it runs slower. So it records a lower flow of a volume of water than actually passes through it. So you have to replace your meters at certain intervals regardless. Uh, and I usually recommend somewhere between seven to ten years to replace a meter. The second part is these new meters in there that are recording system. They have devices in them. They can send acoustic desensities. Now, during the day, I won't do much. Shoot up the volume and track it to sound and you have left, I guess, incidental background noise. It can sense or hear, if you want to say, a leak. And when you drive by that meter once a month and it downloads this data into, uh, the recorder, it will tell you that there's a leak within so many feet of that meter. So we're hopeful that some metering will allow your system operators to dissect the system and search for any more concentrated places for leaks. And also, we believe that decontaminating, um, acoustic meters will help along with your system. So all that's going to do is provide a name and give God the right of the signal. Uh, and we're going to fix you stuff in the process, but it's, it's, you know, we've got the estimate at around eight hundred thousand dollars for that project. That's not going to fix a single leak. It's just going to tell you where they are and it may assist with increased revenue collection. This city will replace the old leak. Do you have any questions about that particular?
The, uh, uh, is anybody got any questions?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Coleman has. Go ahead.
Yeah, Greg, I have a, a question about the second reduc- leakage reduction project. The way I understand it, the automatic meter read system is a completely different system from the zone meter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. However, you've shown us a budget estimate of eight hundred grand and that, that's for the two systems. Can you give us an estimate of what each of those systems might run, if you broke them out?
Uh, Kelly, the zone meters, uh, we could call a statement together with this, not be like a version of it. But I think it ran around a hundred, a hundred twenty thousand and I think, uh, the residential acoustic meters would be somewhere between six hundred fifty and seven hundred thousand.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
And it would not, as you, just to repeat what you said, installing that system would not fix a single leak?
That's correct. And I, I don't make a deep beat the drum on that, but I just want to make sure that if the city crews need any additional, um, you know, help with someone from the city leaders, that everybody here understands that we're spending this money to find out what the problem is.
All right. Okay, so bottom line, my question is, if we only had the money to do one or two of the systems, um, can we get enough benefit out of the hundred and twenty zone meter system to help us enough to, to identify, you know, major leaks?
I, I, I think any of it would help, Kelly, but, uh, my, my hunch and my gut feel is, is that there's a lot of leaks in town that are like one to five gallons a minute. And, uh, there's almost impossible to find, uh, without some type of intelligence. Uh, and so I, I believe that if you, if you just do the zone metering, uh, that it will contract the reduction in leakage, uh, in Livingston. Uh, but at, at the end of the day, it's not my, um, position to, to, to thank you or to approve these expenditures. It's my position and my responsibility and my recommendation. It's my recommendation you do all of it because it's, it's, we've got to attack this.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Kelly, thank you, Greg. Uh, sit tight, Greg. Don't leave just yet.
All right.
So, so looking at that, uh, that, that is a one point three million dollar, uh, project. It is what we're talking. So, uh, but, but we've got to help. Uh, in the American Recovery Act, we're giving one million and eighty-three dollars. That is, that must be, according to the comptroller, uh, money spent on water and wastewater. So my proposal, my proposal would be, uh, to the board, which I've got in this expenditure report for the water, uh, and water plant, is, uh, you're, you're not going to get, uh, according to the comptroller's office, you're not going to get that million eighty-three just in a check. It's, it's going to come, uh, two hundred thousand one month and three hundred thousand the next and seventy-five the next. So it's going to be spread out over time now. I, I, I would, uh, the reason, Jerry, I, I would Jerry to tell lines important, uh, uh, about the, uh, automated meter reading system and the water leak detection that comes with it.
Okay. They and ours will talk about meter readers. They're more accurate, so to speak. And they'll send a signal of a night, it's when they get the signal and it, the clothes or the, if there's more vibration in the system, it'll get used to the system and it, uh, it'll get used to the vibrations in the ground stuff at that time of night. And it'll tell you if there's leaks on the, with the leak system. You know, if it picks up, it'll tell you. And the zone metering will kind of do the exact same thing like, for an example, here in town, so we're using five hundred gallon a minute. And if it goes to five fifty, you've got a fifty gallon a minute leak. So that's, that's the whole purpose of that. And you go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just to ask a couple of questions about the American Rescue Plan. I heard a report last Thursday from comptroller Mumpower that he's still reviewing the, um, legalities, the state's position on, and still in the process of issuing a memorandum to state how these funds can be used. Um, are you saying that you've been given the report that we can only use it in water and wastewater?
I was sitting with Jason Mumpower and, uh, Justin B. Wilson about three months ago at the comptroller's office. And they advised that water and sewer definitely was covered. Anything else, be very, very careful.
So, but then official, he does not officially issue the, 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 as he called it, the permissible uses of these funds. That does not officially come out, right?
I don't know.
That's what he reported. So my question.
He reported that. I know what he, what he told me, about twenty-five million.
Yeah, okay. Well, my question would be, since the water wastewater is a self-funded program, why would a, an increase to our costs in that program not be funded through rate increases versus using American Act funds, Rescue Act funds to do things more in line with general fund or paving or park? Or until we get that permissible uses, are we putting the car to the horse?
I was, I, I think that's, I don't know what you're saying. And I, I understand, hey, I understand what you said. But according to Jason Mumpower in the comptroller's office, when I was there, that water and wastewater. Now, if we can use that, I'll agree with you one hundred percent. If we can take that million and paint streets or bike patrol cars and things like that, I'll back up what I'm saying. But that, that's just not what, uh, Mr. Wilson or Mr. Mumpower led us to believe at all.
Okay. So once we get that official notice, then we'll be able to put that to bed.
Absolutely. So, so, but, but what I have done, Kelly, is, uh, uh, I got that, uh, from the bond fund, uh, because if, if that is all we can use is water and wastewater, then I would certainly charge the board to look forward. We'd borrow.
That would make sense.
Yeah, we, yeah, right. We'd borrow the money, uh, and then that, that loan or rent would pay.
Clearly, we're going to make good use of money.
Yeah, sure.
But I, I'm, I'm very suspicious that they're going to say you can only use it for water wastewater, period. I, so I'm, I'm very curious to see what the final word is. So you said it's a one point three million dollar project?
Yes, that's right.
And Greg, it's one hundred.
That's right.
Okay, so I'm seeing this first project of seven twenty-five, which six twenty-five of that is a grant, right?
That's right.
And then the second part says eight hundred. And the American Rescue Plan wouldn't enter, so we're, we're a one point three million dollar company.
That, that's what I said. What, what we plan on doing is, uh, my, my proposal would you, after we got the official letter from the comptroller's office, um, in the direction that I, I think that he, what he has told us, you'd borrow one point three million dollars, you would start the process. Uh, we would start taking bids on, uh, the zone meter reading, the automatic meter reading and things of that nature. And let the grant stand for the one three. Now, yes, we would have to come out of pocket about, about two hundred thousand.
I, I'm still asking where the one point three million figure is coming from.
Okay. Have you got the letter from Greg Davenport?
Yeah, this is it right here. It says the first part is basically going to cost a hundred thousand in city funds.
Yeah, Greg or, excuse me, excuse me, just now. Is Greg still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Greg, I came up with one point three million.
Okay, let me explain that.
Okay.
I explained the system improvements for the TDBD and for the zone meter and the AMR. The last component was the raw water intake. Um, we've got a project put together. If you recall, about six or eight months ago, we have, and Jack in the room?
Yes, yes, he, yes, he is.
Okay, we have, uh, we, I think we, uh, I, I speak freely, I don't want to flip anything. We have a ball valve problem at the raw water intake and they need to be replaced. And the city devoted money to buy those valves. So, um, in the interim, I put together list of things that need to be addressed out there. Because if we're not a contractor coming out there and replacing those valves, we want to introduce some other incidental items. Now, one of the things that I want to see you do down there and that I recommend is you've got a pump down there that's been in some type of service and that facility went operating in two thousand and nine. And it's my feeling, although it's one time a night, that it's going to end with useful life. Well, as part of the work that's going on with the raw water intake, you've got a spare seven hundred horsepower motor, um, in waiting condition, sitting down and a small filter in the intake, ready to use if you had a motor failure. What I want to see you do is, is I want to see you buy another pump to replace the one that's old but running okay. Uh, and store it in accordance with the mandatory recommendations. So that if you had a pump failure, that you have more ways to put in. Now, I used to not take this position, but things have gotten, well, you can buy anything now. And I'm concerned that if we have, if we have a static concrete pump issue, it could be eight months getting a new pump up there. And I just don't want to see a raw water pump. And I just don't want to see you run on one pump for that long. So, um, that project is planned to be about four hundred thousand dollars. So if you take the four hundred thousand intake, the hundred thousand maximum to the grant, that's five mothers and the eight hundred for leak reaction, that's one point three minutes. And if you subtract the recovery bonus, that leaves about two hundred grand. Is that, do you remember my math there?
Yeah, yes, I do. Dr. Coleman, do you agree with that?
Yes, I was missing the, uh, missing out some of the numbers.
Yeah, now, we have in storage down there right now, a motor, uh, in storage, is that correct, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Motor, not a pump.
A motor.
Right. And we couldn't rebuild the old one.
But the motor's what's gonna be about.
Right.
But we rebuilt that old, that's the old one, that's the original we bought, you know. But, I mean, so he wants us to have two motors?
Yeah, so, we're, we're talking about a pump. Go ahead, Jack.
A pump.
Just a pump.
He's talking about a pump. We've got, we've got a spare pump.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I've seen.
It's the original. Add a rebuild. Yeah, we had to rebuild.
Okay. Got a lot of.
All right, uh, if, if there's no other questions on water and sewer, we move on to the, the last part here, uh, and that's natural gas. Uh, really nothing, uh, to, uh, report there. Uh, do you see our Republicans severance? And, uh, on the gas department, uh, we got in there, uh, to rebuild, rebuild the station number two, uh, at forty thousand and a backhoe trailer, uh, at thirty, so, uh, that's, uh, that's what you got. And folks, if you don't have any questions on page twelve of natural gas, that's your budget. So I'll go back, uh, excuse me, sorry. So I'll, I'll go back, uh, to see exactly, all the way back to page one to see what number you wanna put in there. That's, that's kind of the question that we got. The five cents, um, will bring in an additional forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars in revenue.
So hypothetically, if we had ten cents, we could pay half the city, finish half of our paving.
That's right.
And last year we did how much?
The million.
No. Actually, last year was nineteen cents.
That's right. Twelve, twelve cents. Twelve cents.
Well.
I, I, I think it was nineteen, but we.
We dropped it back.
Did we drop it down to twelve because reappraisal's came out?
We dropped it to thirteen, so.
Yeah, twelve.
Are you saying ten cents?
If you raised it ten cents now, that would bring in ninety, Greg.
If we raised it five cents?
It brings in forty-five.
And choose that thirty-six from the street lots, that would give you eighty-two thousand.
Well, I think he's already, the mayor's already taken that thirty-six savings and he's put it over there into his proposal.
That's right.
He's already absorbing it.
That's right.
Unless we accept a, a whatever his wish list.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? He's already.
And I'd rather not take anything else away from our departments. I mean, we, they need, they need their tools to work with and I, I can't, I can't, I mean, I, I, I'll be honest, when all the projection, or when the wish list came in, I mean, I was projected, uh, for twenty-one, twenty-two, about four hundred thousand. So we cut, 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 cut and I had to talk with all the supervisors and they understand.
Well, I, the paving project has been extremely well received by our citizens as everyone knows. People wanted to see a return for that increase and they got it. Um, and there are a lot of people that are still calling us saying, why did my street get a hand with, you know?
If, if, what are you saying, if we did a ten cent, you do half the paving?
Yeah, what you, what you're gonna get here is, uh, I've got a seven year, um...
But does it also stand reason if you only did the five cents, you could do a quarter instead of half the paving? If we do, how much paving could we get done if, if we threw the nickel?
I don't think we can do that.
Well, you get, it brings in forty-five more grants, right? You said the nickel brings in forty-five grants.
Forty-five thousand dollars, Kelly, and then paid.
They true.
Your bond payment of forty-five thousand gets you how much?
Oh, uh, I, I, I don't have that number.
But if two hundred thousand was gonna get you to one point four.
That's right.
You just, you slice it by four, gets you pretty close to a fifty.
That could get you close, but I don't have that number. That's, you're right, Kelly.
I think that's what we're asking.
So, uh, let, let's, let's talk about that just a second, um. A, uh, five cent increase on a property assessed at a hundred thousand dollars would be twelve dollars and forty-nine cents added to their property taxes. A hundred and fifty thousand of assessed property, uh, the eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents. Two hundred thousand would be twenty-four dollars, ninety-eight cents. Two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars property would be paying thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Three hundred thousand, uh, thirty-seven eighty-eight.
That was on a nickel.
That's on a nickel.
But you did say that the nickel would bring in based on our current property base around forty-five thousand dollars.
That's right.
Okay.
So, and, and it goes back to you on, what, what do you need?
Tonight, we need to make that declaration for a motion to.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, not, not at this work session, when we go into town, so yes.
Tonight, tonight.
Yes, it is tonight.
But you've also got the increase, but there's also been appraisals that have gone significantly. So, you're, you're looking at more than just forty-five thousand in revenue.
No, 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 that's based on the new rates. Yeah, that's based on the new rates.
Back to that hundred and fifty thousand dollar property value, there are taxes would go up, how much on, on a nickel increase?
I think it's at one dollar.
Eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
I just don't believe that if I'm owning a property of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'd be willing to let my taxes go up eighteen dollars to get the street paid full down.
Which we did that last year, but not everybody understood.
Right, yeah, it's not everybody. You can't, you can't incrementally do a tax increase here until you're getting your say.
Right, no, right, right.
But it's only fair that everybody be given the opportunity for us to work for that if we, if we absolutely pay on this.
So, um, that new number, uh, will be one million, five hundred, eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen will be your property tax revenues. That'd be with a nickel.
Okay. Which is the forty-five.
Right. So that's the new number that we allow, we wanna go to rat, and, uh...
And you said the, you said the point from Rogers Brook to finish the program was about a million three?
One point three.
Okay. So if you cut that half, that's sixty, so you would give half at sixty and theoretically have a bond payment of a hundred grand, 'cause it was two hundred grand that didn't make through, right? So theoretically you'd have a hundred grand.
Now, I, Greg, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt that. Of course, keep in mind, I don't know what these old prices are.
Oh, that's not a current price?
This, this, it, yes, yes, it is.
The Rogers Brook's price is the current price.
It is.
So if you split that half, you do, you know, that would get us to having, you know...
You were showing, you were showing a bond payment of two hundred?
For the million.
For the million thirty.
Is that worth?
So if we, if you do ten cents, that's not a grant.
And then, of course, I mean, you're a banker, that's based on seven years, if you, you know, did ten years, capital outlay, that'd probably bring it in just a little less.
Sure would. Payments over ten years.
Yeah, I, I, keep in mind, I did this for the water, but the money is still the same. I did it for the water because we'd have it paid off really, really quick given the fact that American Rescue. So, uh, so, so, uh, we insert that, so Joel Phils, you'll change your numbers to reflect, uh, your property tax, one million, five hundred, eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen. Yeah, yeah, if we decide to do that next, yeah.
That's if we decide to do a nickel.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you may do more, that's right.
More or less.
All right, is there any, this is a work session, the work session's about to come to an end, is there any questions? Okay, if not, uh, we'll call this work.
Can we talk about the audit letter?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, the comptroller always does a letter to the auditors who do the in audit of the books. The comptroller, uh, responds to the auditor each year, whether they accept the audit, they accept the audit with condition, well, not conditions, but just points of in future address this issue. So, the biggest issue we had this year was the recording of retirement, which doesn't affect the town at all, it's just taking the time and getting reports through the state and said, okay, these retirement numbers match our numbers. Um, that's always a very difficult, very difficult part of the report to disclose that. It's about a, about a four-page, five-page note disclosure, which identifies the type of where pension plan and such. Very difficult. So I prepared that part as I do most of the report that goes to the auditors. Um, I had no question that those numbers were accurate. The auditor did not check my numbers apparently because they had the issue come back on again like it was last year. So we're working still to resolve that. And this is a very common note among the auditors, so it's just a difficult part. Uh, the city's direct borrowings also on the note disclosure, which doesn't affect anything, except for we're taking the time, uh, we're working to collect, correct that. The auditors also missed that point. Uh, the interlocal agreement with Tennessee Health Works, we've got that information that just needs to go in the report, which is a very easy fix. And schedule a contribution, well, that's a pension bank given, and schedule changes in property tax, they posted in our reports, I don't mess, there must be some editing issue as far as taking time, so those are all cosmetic changes that we're working on to correct and just a big issue.
All right, thank you. Don't give anymore.
That's right.
All right, that concludes the, uh, work session. Uh, for all the supervisors that came tonight, thank you very, very much. Uh, great having you here. Uh, you're free to stay, you're free to, the work session's over.
Thank you, Mayor. It appears that you all done an excellent job.
Thank you.
For preparing the, the country, and thank you for answering. We were patient with you, Matt, with this question.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. So we will start the city council meeting.
Okay.